Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Vice Chair Zach Bashertash.
It is my pleasure to call to order the October 6, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater. Vice Chair Bashirtash.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomis.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. The Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with their recommendations to the Planning Commission, who will then approve them or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Interpreters, if you'd like to translate the following statements into Spanish and Punjabi, that would be very helpful. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding its items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for non-consent public hearing, Item 6A again. If you are here for 6A, this is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting. Is that too much, too fast? Did you get it? Okay.
Muchas gracias por estar aquí durante esta reunión de la planificación. La comisión va a dar la oportunidad para participación pública, para lo que es el desarrollo de este proceso a través de la ciudad de Bakersfield. La comisión de planificación considerará varios proyectos, incluyendo los mapas de subdivisión, cambios de zona, y las aplicaciones que van a ser recibidas. La ciudad, la división de planeación de la ciudad analizará las peticiones y va a presentar junto con las recomendaciones a la comisión para que sean aprobados. Durante este momento, esta sección de, va a haber un momento durante la audiencia donde ustedes van a poder abordar la comisión durante los temas que serán platicados esta noche. Si usted está aquí para cualquier asunto que no esté en el calendario de consentimiento, para lo que es la audiencia pública del tema 6A, esto no es el tiempo para abordar ese tema. Usted se le dará esa oportunidad para abordar el tema cuando se ha llamado más adelante en la reunión.
Si alguien necesita equipo de interpretación y prefiere escuchar esta audiencia en español, si tenemos el equipo justo atrás del salón en este momento, ya que todos están acomodados, si necesitan interpretación, favor de solamente levantar la mano y haremos llegar equipo usted. If you want to let him know that we do have interpretation equipment in the back in case anyone needs. So, por ese marco durante el pasaje se va a dejar en el anteriores, si alguien necesita equipo de interpretación y prefiere escuchar esta audiencia en español, si tenemos el equipo justo atrás del salón en este momento, ya que todos están acomodados, si necesitan interpretación, favor de solamente levantar la mano y haremos llegar equipo usted. If you want to let him know that we do have interpretation equipment in the back in case anyone needs. So, por ese marco durante el pasaje se va a dejar en el anteriores, si alguien necesita Punjabi, si hay que hablar en Punjabi, si puede hablar en Punjabi, si puede hacer la conversación, gracias.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Again, that's addressing the Commission for items not listed. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless the staff or a commissioner requests specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
If I may, Vice Chair Bashirtash, if I could have the slideshow come up so I can present the item?
Oh, sorry. Now that the slide is up there, may I get a motion approving the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Biddle.
I'll second that.
Please cast your vote. In that second, Mr. Coleman, sorry. You're good.
Motion passes with Chair Kater and Commissioner Wade absent.
Madam Secretary, can they show up on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah, it never showed.
It came up.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the Commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open up all consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item?
I'm not wishing to remove a consent item, but I'm going to be abstaining from Item 5B.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Coleman made the motion. And Ms. Biddle was the second. Please cast your vote.
Motion is approved with Chair Kater and Commissioner Wade absent and Commissioner Neal abstaining from Item 5B.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Our Madam Interpreters, if you'd like to come back up and begin translating in Spanish and Punjabi at this time.
Vice Chair Bashirtash, the interpreters will actually just use the monitors to interpret.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And now is the time for non-consent public hearing Item 6A. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments after that. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise, or in presenting any comments and thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please give us your staff report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Bashirtash. Planning Commissioners, members of the audience, thank you for attending tonight's meeting. This is Item 6A, General Plan Amendment, Zone Change Number 21-0184. It is known as the Majestic Gateway Project, located in South Bakersfield on approximately 91 acres. Throughout my presentation, any reference to acreage or size is just an approximation. This project's site is bounded by Berkshire to the north, South H Street to the east, Hosking Avenue to the south, and Highway 99 to the west. The request is for a change from general commercial, planned commercial development, or C2PCD, to exclusive PCD, and I'll discuss that more in my presentation later. Also, it's a change in zoning from C2PCD to light manufacturing on 57 acres. Underlying general plan designation will remain GC, which is consistent with the exclusive PCD that's proposed. However, there will be a general plan amendment from general commercial to light industrial on the 57 acres to be consistent with the requested M1 zoning. Surrounding development to the north is primarily vacant. There is some commercial, and then on the other side of the canal, you have additional commercial and residential. You have single-family residential to the east, vacant commercial land to the south, Highway 99 to the west, and on the other side of Highway 99 is additional residential, some commercial, and some vacant land. I just want to point out, the nine-and-a-half acres on the corner parcel, that is not a part of this project's site. It's under separate ownership. Part of the proposal that you see there does have some interconnectivity with that parcel, so in the future, there will be, and we will strive to have some connection there, so it's a cohesive type of commercial development. Regarding the proposed commercial, it is 34 acres, which also includes a four-and-a-half acre water retention basin. That water retention basin will serve the entire site along with the corner parcel. It was designed to assist with that corner parcel, and it will be constructed as part of the first phase with the industrial. No commercial is actually proposed right now, but the environmental impact report did analyze 187,500 square feet of building space. Regarding the commercial, there were some conceptual site plans and renderings submitted, but with the exclusive PCD zone that's requested, they will have to submit for a formal application that'll be reviewed by what we call our Site Plan Review Committee, which is seven different departments in the city. There'll be a similar public notice to what was done for this meeting, and that'll come back to your Planning Commission for review, comment, and a recommendation to City Council, who will ultimately approve the commercial design. Regarding the industrial, 57 acres, as I previously mentioned, the warehouse operations are a permitted use in the M1 zone, and they are proposing just over a million square feet of warehouse, of which 90% would be distribution, 10% refrigeration, and then depending on the end user, up to 50,000 square feet or 5% could be office space, which obviously would have a reduction in either the distribution or refrigeration portion of the warehouse. Heavy trucks entering the site will be on Berkshire. There are two points of access. One of them, on the far left or west side, would be signalized to allow for a left turn-in. Path of travel out would be Berkshire to South H Street to Hosking to Highway 99. That is except for the local delivery trucks, who could go north on Colony or even further south along South H. There are 236 truck spaces, 173 dock doors, with an average of approximately 850 average trips throughout a 24-hour day that it's operational, and no on-street parking will be allowed. The passenger vehicles will be taking access off of South H Street, three points of access, and again, one, the middle one, is signalized to allow for left turn-in. It has parked for 740 passenger vehicles, of which 12% will be clean air vehicles, 5% quick charge, level-two vehicle stalls, and 10% or 74 EV-ready stalls. They average approximately 3,000 average trips per day, and again, no on-street parking will be allowed. The actual warehouse building itself is about 1,500 feet long by 670 feet wide. The M1 zone does allow for a 75-foot-tall building, however, the applicant is proposing this to be 50 feet tall. To help soften the aesthetics, there is an eight-foot solid screen wall that you can see on this rendering, and that will be around three sides of the building, as you can see on this landscape plan with the red dotted line. That wall, eight-foot wall, will be there. Into the landscape plan, the shade canopy requirements are for 40% of the shading, but the applicant is providing almost 55% of the lot to be shaded. With that much landscaping, though, they will still have to comply with the 2015 Executive Order regarding the regulation on how landscaping is irrigated to prevent wasted irrigation water, so they will comply with the state's Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, or MLO. As with the 2015 initial zone change and general plan amendment, where this went from residential to commercial, an environmental impact report, or EIR, was also prepared for this GPA in zone change. An EIR, EIR is an informational document that informs the decision-makers and the public about the potential impacts of a project, and identifies ways to minimize those impacts, either through mitigation measures or project alternatives. The EIR process and through the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, requires an independent judgment of the lead agency, so with that, we have a list of consulting firms and individuals that we have on file that can prepare SEQA documents. So we put out a request for proposal for this project, and ultimately, we selected TMB Planning, and they are in the audience today, if there's questions for them. And it is TMB's part to ensure that the document is prepared in compliance with SEQA. There are 20 different topics that are evaluated in an EIR. The five that you see on the left, those were topics that did not require further detailed evaluation, and then the 20 topics on the right, or, excuse me, the 15 topics on the right, were the ones that were evaluated in more depth. Of those 15, seven of them were either identified as no impact or less than significant impact. Another six required some mitigation to bring those down to less than significant. And two of those, greenhouse gas emissions and transportation, each had a threshold which was determined to be significant and unavoidable. There's no ironclad definition of what significant is, however, SEQA does provide some guidelines, and it really is, it's careful judgment on the part of the decision-makers and the public agency, and it's based on substantial evidence in the record. SEQA further defies, defines substantial evidence as enough relevant information that a fair argument can be made to support a conclusion, even though other conclusions might also be reached. It does not include just a plain argument, speculation, or opinion. So again, greenhouse gases, threshold A, would the project generate greenhouse gas emissions, or GHG, either directly or indirectly, that may have a significant impact on the environment? The threshold for this was net zero, so therefore, the project would result in a net increase in greenhouse gas emissions. And net zero is the balance in the amount of greenhouse gas produced and the amount removed from the atmosphere, and that zero is achieved when that amount is added, when the amount added is no more than the amount taken away. Also, under transportation, there was one threshold that could not be mitigated down, in that although the employee vehicles did not exceed the threshold, the project's truck vehicle miles traveled did exceed that threshold, and therefore was deemed significant and unavoidable. SEQA also requires that the decision-makers balance the benefits of this project versus the unavoidable impacts, and if the project benefits outweigh the unavoidable environmental effects, the adverse effects may be considered acceptable. A study was prepared, or analysis was prepared, showing some of the benefits. Two of them I'll just highlight real quick. Upon build-out and stabilization, the project is estimated to annually support 3,700 labor jobs, excuse me, with a total economic output of 390 million through direct, indirect, and induced economic activity, and it would also generate approximately 2.2 million per year in net revenues to the city's general fund upon build-out and stabilization, and that's after $600,000 annually in fiscal expenses. This is just a quick snapshot of what the EIR process is, and I just want to touch on a few. So in January of this year, when we hired the consultant, TMB Planning, we identified topics to be analyzed. March and April, we did a 30-day public comment period in scoping meetings, and that was done through March through April, and that actually went longer than 30 days, because we did receive 10 comments, and one of those requested that we have another scoping meeting. We held the first scoping meeting virtually, but they requested an in-person one, so we extended the comment period and held an in-person scoping meeting. And again, we received 10 comments total on that. We then prepared, or TMB also with the assistance of the lead agency, prepared a draft environmental impact report that circulated for 45 days between July and August, and we received six comment letters on that. We did the final EIR based on those comment letters, and that, along with the public notice that we did for this meeting, we received three additional comments. Those were received subsequent to release of the staff report, and those were provided in a memorandum to your commission this afternoon. That brings us to where we are right now. We are at the public hearing phase, so you will be taking public comments and then making a recommendation for City Council, who would go on to certify the EIR if that is the decision made. Therefore, your commission has several options tonight. You can continue to October 20th. If there are unanswered questions or additional information that we can pull together and come back. If that information or those questions are going to take so much time that we don't know when we can come back, then you could refer this project back to staff. You could deny this project for reasons made known by your commission at tonight's meeting. You could approve one of the project alternatives as described in Chapter 6 of the EIR, or you could approve the project by adopting the resolutions for the EIR, general plan amendment, and zone change with listed conditions or modifications of conditions as a result of this meeting, and again, that would be a recommendation to council. The draft resolutions that are attached to the staff report are for approval of the Based on this information, staff recommends that your commission render a decision. Staff is available, as is staff's consultant, TMB Planning, and the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is John Semken. I'm an executive vice president, Majestic Realty, and I'm here to just give you a brief explanation of the project. After Paul's presentation, I'll go even faster, because he's covered a lot of it, but I think there's a little background that perhaps we would like to share, and of course, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat your first and last name?
My first name is John, my middle initial is H, my last name is Semken, S-E-M-C-K-E-N. Just a little bit about Majestic. It's a family-owned company. The chairman, the father, came here out of the Navy in 1948 after the war, and the new chairman is the son, and we have headquarters in Los Angeles, and our offices in Atlanta, and Texas, and Pennsylvania, Denver, Colorado, Las Vegas, Phoenix, and Portland, and several offices within some of those cities. We predominantly develop master-planned business parks, and our current portfolio is a little over 83 million square feet, and that's growing by several million square feet a year. We are known as the largest privately-held real estate development firm in the country. We're probably ninth on that list, but the eight in front of us are public companies, and probably the next six behind us are public companies, too. We're a very large private company. We're vertically integrated. We have, we have our, yes, sir. Speaking closer to the mic, okay. We have our, we have the development team, the construction team, the leasing team, the management team, the finance team. We all, everything is in-house, and then we have consultants that join and support all of those teams. And so, and the majority of our clients are, you know, Fortune 500 firms that are tenants in the buildings. We have several different expertises. You know, we do the planning entitlements and the capital markets, and the leasing and financing of the projects, as we said earlier. We also do retail development and leasing and office. Primarily, the largest part of our portfolio is industrial. Our construction company is there, does the architecture and the engineering and all of the things that we need to draw these plans. Our management company, we have two foundations. The Majestic Realty Foundation is focused on health and education and violence provision for families and children, and we have the land of the, and those dollars are provided by the partners. Each time we receive a fee, a percentage of our fee goes to the foundation, and then the chairman of the company matches us all 100%, so the number grows rather rapidly when we do the development. The only other thing about that is we have to spend the money in the communities where we make it, so we can't make money in Bakersfield and spend it in Los Angeles, and so, and we don't want to do that either. Our second foundation is a military foundation. It's called the Land of the Free Foundation. Mr. Rosky was a Marine veteran from Vietnam. Our partner, Kent Valley, was in Vietnam with him in 1964, and I'm technically a Navy-Vietnam veteran, but I joined the Navy during Vietnam, but I was in college at the time. So the three of us started a foundation, and that foundation is to support the men and women of the armed services who work and sacrifice every day to make sure we'll always live in the land of the free. And so those funds are only spent for foundations for veterans, their families, and people that are active duty. We've already talked a little bit about the company and the portfolio, but we really do pride ourselves in knowing what we need to build and going through the whole process. We spend a lot of time in community outreach to make sure the people in the communities that we're working in understand what we're doing. With this project, we, we had fact sheets in three languages, Punjabi, English, and Spanish. We sent those fact sheets to, and 1,000 support cards, which were also in three different languages. We put 2,500 door hangers on the houses in the immediate vicinity, not the immediate vicinity, but the large circle around the project. We canvassed door-to-door, trying to get, explain to people what it was. We walked 1,200 homes. We, we had an additional, after leaving the doorknobs, had 350 callbacks. We let everyone know we had a website. We had an open house recently at the Horizon Elementary School, and the people who came were, seemed to be very happy, and they were mostly interested in jobs. They liked the way the project looked, but they were more interested in jobs. We met with the Horizon Elementary Principals, Olivera Middle, and the school, Golden Valley High School Superintendent, and the Greenfield Union School District. We toured the CTE Logistics Program and the high school, the Independence High School. So we, we've met with several... So we've met with several members of the council. We've met with Mayor Go, and everything that we've done in the EIR was translated into So that entire document is in Spanish. So the key is trying to make sure that we get as much information about us and the project as we possibly can. I talked about the foundation. Again, I don't want to reiterate it, but it's something we're very proud of, and we spend a lot of time in communities and helping children and families and veterans in the community. We do all different kinds of real estate. As I said earlier, we're predominantly an industrial developer, but we do, every once in a while, do specialty projects. We've done, you know, the Staples Center in Los Angeles. We did the Stockyards in Fort Worth. We do hospitality projects. We have hotels in Las Vegas and Los Angeles and Texas and all over the West, and limited-service hotels. Office buildings, you know, the building that we're in is our office building, and we do those. And we've recently done multifamily projects, because that's an important element of what we're, you know, is needed in California especially. So all of those things are what we do pretty much, if you can think of real estate, the only one I can think of that we don't do is single-family homes. That's not an expertise of the company. We have 10 offices across the country in Portland, Los Angeles, Las Vegas, Phoenix, Denver, three offices in Texas, one office in Atlanta, and one office in Pennsylvania, with projects in many of the other states adjacent to those offices. We are significantly interested in green buildings and environmental buildings, industrial buildings, as you know. You can build a green shell. The tenant is the one who largely decides what level of lead we're going to be, but we encourage our tenants to look at those, especially on the builder suits, and as we go forward. One of the questions that came up in our council meetings was, you know, how does retail coordinate with industrial? So the first project we show here is the Brookwood Business Park in Hillsborough, Oregon. That project has, you know, is right on the 26 freeway, Hillsborough. Our project's about eight miles west of Portland, and that project has a very large industrial portfolio with a Bass Pro at the beginning of it. The second project that I wanted to show here, let's see if I can, is that going to start the video, or did I turn it off? Do you know how I get to the, click on the video on the bottom? Okay, could you do that for me? That'd be wonderful. So this is a video of the shopping center that's in Walnut and the City of Industry. So that's a, you know, we're very proud of that center, if you could go back to the picture, but that center is outlined in red on that picture that you see there. It's adjacent to nearly 7 million square feet of industrial buildings, of which 80% of them are ours. So you can see that there are, it's a great place for the people that are the employees in those buildings to go and have lunch. It's a great place to have, you know, to get a break when they're in the day, and they work back and forth. When you're standing in that project, when you saw those pictures, you didn't see one industrial building, and that's largely what will likely happen here because of the landscaping and the things around everything when you're walking on the main street. You've already seen where the location of the project. I won't go through that again. Here's the parcel map that we're requesting, and that will come back to the planning commission for approval after the city council hopefully approves the project. There are, there are many parcels there, possibly more than we need, but we want to make sure we have enough, and if we have to do parcel, lot-line adjustments to create the exact number of parcels, we'll do that. The significant thing about the project is the landscape, as we've talked to. You know, when we look at the projects and what we've asked, or the screening of the project from the streets and from the community was an important element, and the landscaping within the project was also important, you know, for shading to keep the heat, the heat from the parking lots and everything. And so you can see on the west side of the picture, along the 99, there's a line of landscaping that goes the full length of the project. Then there's another line of landscaping that goes the full length that wraps around the retention basin, and then there's another line of landscaping that runs the full length of the project on the west side of the entry drive, and then there's another line that runs the full length of the landscaping along the east side of the entry drive. So that's one, two, three, four levels of screening of the industrial building from the 99. On the other side, there was the, as earlier, that the planning showed you, the wall that screens, and then we have the significant landscaping along H Street. As you may know, the community on the H Street is, there's a canal on the east side of H Street, and then there's a large open area before a wall that runs the entire length of the community to the east of us. And all of the street widening for the project came off of our property because we couldn't move the canal to widen the street. Right now, it's two lanes. We widened it to four, and we widened it to six at the intersection of Hosking. All of that street take came from our property and the piece that's not a part, which is Mr. Del Papa's property. The others, well, let me go through the site plan. The councilman asked us to have a street city walk type of retail project. So what you see here is the entrance off of the project just north of Mr. Del Papa's property. When we tried to originally bring both of these projects into one EIR, you know, he declined. He didn't want to do that. So what we did is, the entrance to the project is 100% on our property, so that when he designs his project, the city can be comfortable that there's an entrance into the project that his project will be able to access. So the northern entrance into his property is the southern entrance from our property, the main street entrance. So you can see there, that's what the main street would look like in that rendering. And then as we, as you get down closer to the cinema or the type building that you saw in there, you can see, it just shows tenants of different sizes. Those tenants can be expanded. Those pods could be two tenants wide or three tenants wide, but that just gives us an idea of what it looks like from a square footage size. When you look at the industrial building from Hosking, this is a view looking west from H Street, excuse me, and so you can, oh, actually, this is looking north from Hosking to the retail, okay? Then you can see looking west from H Street at the main entrance, so that's where you'll be able to see the building the most because there's a street there, there's not as much landscaping. And then another shot that's looking from Hosking and Berkshire at the north, at northeast corner of the project. We were asked during our meetings with commissioners to provide a rendering of what it's going to look like from the 99, and as you can tell from these renderings, they're rather detailed, and the renderer couldn't get it done in time for this meeting, but he promised us that we would have it for the city council hearing, and we'll also have it in time. We have to come back for the site plan, I mean, the parcel map review. So that's the overall elements of the project. The other thing that we did on the project that is, we think, significant, because it's the first time we've ever done it, but from an air quality perspective, we met with the San Joaquin Valley Air Quality Management District. We completed a VAIRA with them. After the comments that we received back on the EIR, it became clear to us that the best way for us to proceed with the project is to, from an air quality perspective, go to net zero. So our company's 75 years old, and this is the first time we've ever done it. And so we've usually up until this point mitigated to a less than significant threshold, but we now decided to go with a net zero threshold for air quality. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions, or I can come back up. And all of our consultants and lawyers are here too, if you have more specific questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name.
Hertz Ramirez. Good evening, Vice Chair, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Hertz Ramirez, and I'm here on behalf of more than 32,000 members of Labor's International Union of North America, representing Southern California. We are here to express our support for the Majestic Gateway Project. Warehousing and commercial projects of this scale don't come along every day.
Please, speaking to, yeah, thank you.
The developer before you has made a choice to use the best craftsman in the industry standing behind me, and we are, you know, here to support the project because they will be paying well-paid jobs and provide opportunities for the community who spends money in this community. Well-paid, benefited construction jobs with healthcare benefits and pension mirrors ours. This project will be a welcoming addition to Bakersfield and a chance for our members to work close to home, spend quality time with our families, their families, and rather than on the road, traveling from job to job, this is an excellent chance to put a wide variety of trades to work, building a better Bakersfield while we are here. A vote in favor of this project tonight is a vote of support of the men and women whose skilled labor builds some of the finest developments in California. Launa stands in support of the project before you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat your first name?
Hertz Ramirez, H-E-R-T-Z-R-A-M-I-R-E-Z.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Staff. My name is Ryan Nance. That's R-Y-A-N-N-A-N-C-E. I'm a representative of the Southwest Carpenters, and I'm speaking tonight on Item 6A. The Carpenters stand in full support of this project and see the Majestic Gateway as an investment in our community. We're thankful to see a development of this caliber in Bakersfield at a time when fuel costs are astronomical and our members have to travel quite far often times. Good-paying jobs, responsible development, close to home. This project checks every box for us. As a representative of Carpenter's Local 661, with over 4,800 local members, we ask the planning commission to vote in favor of the general plan amendment and zone change on the Majestic Gateway Project tonight. Thank you.
My name is Brandon Armour, spelled A-R-M-E-R. I am a resident of Bakersfield, California, and I am here tonight on behalf of the Ironworkers Union Local 155, members of the District Council of Ironworkers, proudly in support of the Majestic Gateway Project, who will put local residents to work on projects that will benefit us right here in Bakersfield. Our skilled and apprentice workforce play an important role in well-planned and solidly-built projects. The Majestic Gateway Project is a good opportunity to do just that. Plus, as a resident, I'm glad to see Bakersfield playing a larger part in a modern-day commerce. We may be ordering products online, but they have to be warehoused and distributed from somewhere. This project is a good blend of both classic retail and web-based purchases. We ironworkers stand in support of the project before you tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of the project?
Good afternoon. My name is Jorge Medrano, and I support this project.
Good evening, Commissioners. Christine Halli with Cornerstone Engineering, right here in Bakersfield, and I have some information I'd like to enter into the record here tonight. There was a public comment that was made that expressed some concern about the possibility for some residual pesticides that might be on the property because of its legacy use in farming. So we did commission, in response to that, soil sampling on the site and found that there were, well, I'll read it. The results of the certified lab analyses did not detect the presence of any pesticide component, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to provide written documentation of that into the record.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing no more, oh, you coming up?
Good evening. My name is Hector Vasquez, and I'm in favor of this project.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Randy Giamara. My family, excuse me, R-A-N-D-Y-G-I-U-M-A-R-R-A. Our family has owned this property for decades, and for decades, we have met with developers and been in contract with multiple developers from out of town who have made a lot of promises and had a lot of grandiose ideas, you know, many of which seemed almost too good to be true. And, but my father, who I wish could be here today because he worked so hard on this project for, you know, well over 25 years, and would be so proud to see this property and this project getting to this stage, especially with the support of so many great, hard-working men and women from here in our community. And I wish he could be here presenting this because he deserves it. He worked very hard on this, and I, nothing would make us more proud than to see this project come to fruition. Ultimately, what happened over, you know, the many years with multiple developers is none of those projects wound up coming to fruition. They maybe were a little bit too grand in scope and not practical for our community, and, you know, that's all in the past now, and, you know, but over the years, we had numerous people recommend this great company from down south, the Majestic Company. And fortuitously, we met just kind of by happenstance, and since we have met with Majestic, it has been nothing but forward progress, which is very much unlike what had happened before, where it was just hurry up and wait, lots of empty promises, guarantees about which tenants were coming and their commitment to our community that never really, you know, came to fruition. And, but since we've met with the group from Majestic, it has been the same group of people. They have listened to not only our family and kind of our concerns about the project and what we wanted to see, but also multiple council members. I know Mr. Parlier, when they first met with him, as Mr. Semkin just said, was particularly interested in having a main street feel on the retail component of this. Immediately, they went into action and put that together. They listen, they react, and they get things done. I can tell you that in less than two years, this company has done more than the previous companies did in 10-plus years, and I wish we would have met them sooner. I want you to know that our family takes a lot of pride in our town. I want you to know that our family takes a lot of pride in our town and we want to see something that not only our family can be proud of, but that the men and women of Bakersfield can be proud of and that will draw people from other parts of California to come visit. And I feel like this is going to be one of those destinations. It's going to provide jobs, it's going to provide tax dollars, and it's going to be a site that all of us can be proud of as you enter back into Bakersfield. I just, I want to thank you for your time tonight. I want to implore you to please show your support for this project and also let you know that our family and the Majestic Company will always be here to answer your questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name's Alejandro Mendez, a resident of Bakersfield, and I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone and state your name and proceed.
Hi, my name is Sandra Placencia. Sandra Placencia? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to give comment. I'm the current policy advocate with Leadership Council, a local nonprofit in the area.
Will you move the microphone over just a tad? Thank you.
We're here to ask the planning commission not to rezone the land from general commercial to light industrial and keep the zoning general commercial in accordance with the no-project alternative. We also urge the city to further analyze the alternative locations identified in the EIR, and some of those sites are much better suited and zoned for this type of development. While the draft EIR included some recommended mitigation measures, there are additional mitigation measures and studies that must be incorporated to the EIR. For example, this project has yet to comply with the Air District's indirect source rule, which requires submission of an air impact assessment before applying for project-level approval from a project agency. This is so proper mitigation and clean air design under the ISR can be incorporated into the city's analysis. A primary concern for residents is traffic and pedestrian safety. Panama Lane already has some of the worst congested traffic within high-traffic hours and residents fear that hawking will be the same if this project moves forward. With 19 different schools within a two-mile radius, an increase of traffic brings even more fear into the hearts of parents whose children walk to school every day. Residents are also concerned about the air quality and the health effects of a warehouse project near them. As it stands now, the EIR fails to properly describe and mitigate the human health impacts of this project. The community of Greenfield ranks in the 89th percentile for pollution burden. This is not an ideal location for a warehouse project, which will exacerbate air quality, traffic, and health conditions. The area is currently within the 88th percentile for asthma, 96th percentile for cardiovascular disease, 90th percentile for pesticide exposure, and 82nd for pollution burden. Moreover, the city must consider land use practices that may result in unlawful discriminatory effects under the Fair Employment and Housing Act, which may include the sitting of toxic, polluting, or hazardous land uses in a manner that adversely impacts housing opportunities. Given Greenfield's demographics and the significant adverse impacts this project will likely have on housing in the community and other neighborhoods surrounding the project, the project at its proposed location is likely to result in unlawful discriminatory effect. Lastly, placing a warehouse project in the proposed site could lead to a violation of the city's duty to affirmatively further fair housing. We urge the planning commission to deny the rezone and stop to further analyze alternative locations. For clarification, we're not against the project, we're for the commercial, but we just want a different project site. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Does any Commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only a time to ask questions. Go ahead.
I have a question for the workers that showed up here in support of the project for job purposes. I'm just curious how many people actually live in the city of Bakersfield? That's amazing. That's all I wanted to know.
My system's not working.
Is it? Go ahead. Commissioner, come in.
So, thank you. All right. So this is for staff. I don't have access to the staff report. Has any, has that question been addressed regarding the air district issue? That the person that is opposed brought up?
For the San Joaquin Valley APCD ISR?
Yes.
I can defer to our consultant who's in the audience.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tracy's in with the consulting firm TMB Planning. Yes, that issue has been addressed. As was mentioned in the staff report and by the applicant testimony, this project has entered into a voluntary emission reduction program with the air district. As far as our firm knows, this is the, perhaps only, and if not only, one of the first times a development project has mitigated its impact to net zero. So all of the criteria area pollutants that this project would produce will be mitigated to net zero, which is comporting with the ISR.
Thank you. My second question regarding that, I'm sorry, it was for the staff, I apologize, was regarding the opponents from, I'm sorry, you from the Leadership Council? Is that the, I'm sorry, I don't mean to dismiss you. Regarding violations of the Fair Housing Act, I'm not sure exactly how that applies here. We've been very aggressive about housing in this community, so I'm not sure how this violates that. Yeah, I don't, let the staff answer it first, then you can have another say.
Again, this is not zoned for residential use.
All right.
If Ms. Sandra would like to clarify or expand upon how she feels it is a violation of the fair housing, she may.
Okay.
If you're not sure.
Okay, now you can go.
Well, I think first of all, we need to think about the fact that this site was already zoned for residential, right, back in 2015 as was stated earlier. And now it's being, it was zoned to commercial after that, and now it's being zoned to light industrial, or proposed to.
I'm sorry, can you please state your first and last name?
Yes, Emma de la Rosa. So the city has a duty to affirmatively further fair housing, and that means that you have to reverse any type of segregation patterns that, you know, have historically been made, right? And so by choosing to put a warehouse that would lead to health impacts or traffic concerns or other issues that residents will have to face, you are not reversing time, you're not reversing the impact of segregation that it has had in communities, right? And so by putting a warehouse in that area, again, it could lead to a violation of not fulfilling your duty to affirmatively further fair housing. When it comes to the Fija, if you make a decision, any land use decision, that would end up in a discriminatory effect, in this case, we have primarily Latino, Hispanic residents, Punjabi residents, residents who do not have English proficiency, that already classifies or gives, you know, the, that already states that there's a protected class that would have to bear the impacts of this warehouse being placed in that area, which then it would, it would end up in a discriminatory effect or discriminatory impact, right? So those are some of the considerations that we are asking you to take into consideration today. And also, in thinking about the alternative project sites, there are other sites that were listed in the EIR that are not located in areas where there are predominantly Latino or predominantly Punjabi residents, that could be a better site suited for this project.
Thank you. I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Seeing no further Commissioner questions, at this time, we are going to have a rebuttal period and each side is going to get five minutes. We ask that you respect the clock, please. And after those who speak in favor for five minutes go, then those in opposition will also have five minutes to speak. And then at that point, we will render a decision. So, anyone want to speak in favor once more, please? Step to the podium and state your name. If we could have the clock and timer set up, please. One moment for the clock and timer. Are you ready? Okay.
Thank you Commissioners. My name is John Simkin. I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to come up and rebut, but we haven't got anything left to say and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Come on. Sure, please step to the microphone, state your name.
My name is Sam Kliewer, that's spelled K-L-I-E-W-E-R. I have two things that I want to bring up. First of all, the pedestrians, school students walking around the project. I'm looking at that map and I do not see anything abutting that project where school students would be walking. And the second item, she made the comment about it being built in a Latino-strong area. I don't know where she lives at, but take a look around, there is no place in California that's not strong in Latino population. Take a look around in the audience. I see an awful lot of Latinos. I don't see what her problem is. Thank you.
Thank you. Four minutes left. Does anyone else want to speak? This rebuttal period. Please state your name.
Yeah, my name is Daniel Valenzuela, spelled V-A-L-E-N-Z-U-E-L-A. Not only am I a skilled construction worker with the Labor Local 220, I'm also a homeowner in the vicinity of the project on the other side of 99. I live off of Wybelle in Berkshire, and I think this project will be very beneficial to our neighborhood and to all the homeowners in that area because of the entertainment that it's going to put there, as well as the industrial and the job that it's going to create. And as far as the environmental, you know, the landscaping and the beautification of the area is going to be great. So I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now we can open this up. Yeah. Clock stopped. Now we can open this up for opposition to have a moment of, five minutes of rebuttal time. If you'd like to speak in opposition once more, please step to the microphone, state your name. Okay, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. If any Commissioners have any questions of the public, it's closed, but anyone have any commissions or comments they'd like to make about this? Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I've read through the EIR and I've looked at this project very seriously. I think many of us can remember when we were supposed to have a canal project in that same parcel with Venice-type canals and some kind of shopping center that everybody that lived here always knew was a scam. I don't know how the developer ever got any finance to get that going, but it died. And we've been stuck with, you know, the canals that were dug out for a decade at least. And now it's a haven for homeless people that are, you know, camping in those canals. So I, so when this project came up, I was like, I don't know, do I want, do I want to see an industrial building there? But I think that in our time, we need to be cognizant of having commercial and industrial and other uses that coexist. I don't think we can have, you know, these kind of buildings over here and these kind of buildings over there. I think we need to find a way to make those coexist. And I'm also very concerned about creating jobs in Kern County and local jobs and local well-paying jobs. And so to me, that's a plus. I think that the developer, in conjunction with staff, have done a good job of mitigating the EIR concerns that we can mitigate, and I think we can justify some of the other concerns. I don't know how adding commercial in that neighborhood that supports the housing around it is detrimental to the people there, I just don't get that part. But I think this will be a good project overall. I have some concerns about the visual impact of that first building that's going to go out there, being the industrial building. And I would like to see some mitigation of that, mainly the elevations that we've seen. We have these long, level buildings. I think I'd like to see some elevation relief and I'd like to see some, maybe a standard that's applied more in our commercial zone, and I think the planners can help with that, where we change the elevations just a little bit for some visual relief. And I'd like to see some more landscaping along the west side of the project, or at least be incorporated into the project as a condition of approval. But overall, I think that this project is a good fit for that location and I would be supportive of it with some minor conditions. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone that stood up and presented tonight, both in support of the development and in opposition. When there's a room this full, it's probably a little nerve-wracking to say something that opposes the majority of the group. And so I admire the courage of the people who spoke in opposition, even though the room is full of people and seems to be full of people in support. I grew up in Bakersfield and I remember living out that way on a dirt ranch when I was a kid. And it's still dirt out there and I'm really excited at the idea of a development like this going into that area. One thing as a person of color that I've noticed about the way that cities develop is that oftentimes, areas that are more racially diverse don't tend to have is that oftentimes, areas that are more racially diverse don't tend to have as good, you know, facilities, commercial developments and things like that. So the fact that that community is Latino and is Punjabi and we have such a beautiful project being proposed that will improve the quality of life of the residents in that area, that's amazing in so many ways. Entertainment, beautification, actually using the real estate that's out there and developing into something beautiful like the family that owned the property envisioned for so long. I think that's amazing. And also the jobs. I was absolutely moved by the amount of people that came in here and stood up and said, I support this project because it will provide good-paying jobs. And those are the things, as a Commission, that we consider and give a lot of weight to when we're deciding, you know, whether we support a project or not. So I just wanted to thank everybody for participating and for showing up tonight. I love that we're getting jobs. One of the things, and that's why I asked the question of, are you from Bakersfield? That I'm concerned about, just like with our real estate, people are moving here from all over and we love new newcomers to the city, but it's raising the property values. And I have a fear that developments like this will draw people from outside of the city to come and get these jobs that our city residents should have. So I don't know if the developer has some sort of way of ensuring that our residents actually get these jobs, at least a certain percentage of them, but I'd encourage the developer to maybe track that. It'd be interesting to see how many of these jobs are actually people from the city of Bakersfield. And I'd love to follow that. But overall, it just seems like something that's going to expand our city in a new way. And I'm imagining how much we love the marketplace and this will be a new sort of version of that over there, I hope. And I hope one day to go have coffee there, shop there and see it all realized for our city. So, thank you.
I think I want to mirror my fellow Commissioners, but thank you so much for coming out tonight and showing how many local jobs this kind of project will affect. And thank you for coming out and pointing our direction in some of the things that might oppose this project. Traffic and pedestrian safety is always a big problem here in Bakersfield and all over the state. But when you have an empty lot like this, it causes traffic to speed up. I know my very first car accident was right on the corner of Hosking and South H, that stop sign that was right there. So anytime you see streetlights come in and sidewalks, I think we should all be in favor of what we can do in these communities. So thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Okay, forgive me, I have a cold. No, I don't have COVID. I just have a cold and my granddaughter shared it with me and her father. So here we are. I would have a question, if you don't mind, to the applicant or his consultant regarding the elevation. Whoever wants to take my question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You had mentioned that you had a rendering that was being prepared for the view from 99.
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't have it.
Not yet.
So, could you describe it to us?
Well, Commissioner Coleman talked about two things. You're talking about the elevation changes. We have elevation changes, but it's clear that it's not enough. So, you know, we can, we can change the elevation. If you could go back to the landscape slide, that would be helpful. And I, to be perfectly honest, we thought we were writing renderings, making renderings that the community would love, so we did it from where the community is. We didn't think about the freeway side, but the, when you, it's upset. Well, I need the other one, please. I need the retail, I need the west, the retail on the west side. Do you have that? Oh, that was in my presentation, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, we're out of luck. Oh, that'll, that'll be helpful. But if you look at that photo, there's, there are, there's a full line of trees, the full length of the 99 along the freeway. Then there's another line of trees that are along the west side of the detention basin and then go back up the east side of the retail to the north. And there's another line of trees that comes south. One of the things that we did do in terms of screening from the freeway, which we didn't, we decided not to overdo it, would show a six-foot person in a car, or a person in a car driving north on the 99 at an angle looking over the height of a 10-foot tree. Okay? You can barely see the top of the building because, because there's one, two, three, four lines of just landscaping, not including the landscaping that will be in the retail. But it's a good question and we're going to provide that retail. The only reason is the artist couldn't get it done in time from when the request was made.
I guess I'll make this, the Johnny Carson joke. Johnny Carson has, was not a real fan of Bakersfield, so that is the gateway to our city right now.
Yes, ma'am.
So having something that's aesthetically pleasing would be a concern of mine. Our commercial relief is every 30 feet. This is a warehouse, so would you be open to like every 50 feet providing elevation relief?
Yes.
Okay, we got that on the record, boys and girls. That's really my concern. The rest of it looks very well thought out, but it's a big building.
It's a very big building.
It is a very big building. So I hope that you have a nice 50-foot for the council to take a look at.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to thank everyone again for coming out this evening. We very much appreciate people showing up to support this community and people that are passionate about this community, both foreign and opposition. It's nice to have dialogue about that. I remember about 25 years ago cursing the sky as my bike tire was flattened for the millionth time on that dirt road of South H when I went to Olivier Junior High when it was first built. And I said, why is this still jacked up like this? And I swore to myself in that moment that I would sit here and, no, I didn't do that. But I am very pleased that, I mean, it was a scary, that was a scary road. And I remember looking over my shoulder many times on my bicycle with no sidewalk because you don't want to ride in the dirt because you get the goat heads in your tires, thinking, please, just let me get to class. I'm already in trouble. So, thank you. I think it's a beautiful, Ms. Lomas, what she said was a concern to all of us. When you come into Bakersfield, Bakersfield doesn't have the most sweet reputation in our state. And so we really, really take very serious the visual look as you come into the city of Bakersfield, what that, what that means to everyone when they drive and when they look over that direction. Is it just a giant warehouse? Is it, or is it, you know, visually beautiful? Does it, does it improve our town? So I'm glad that we've got that. So at this time, does any Commissioner like to make a motion?
Vice Chair, if I may just add two points of comment.
Please.
The first would be thanking Ms. Emma Della Rosa for clarifying her affirmatively furthering fair housing comment. I'd just like to note that we are doing that citywide and it's a requirement of the state and that's being done through our Housing Element update. And you provided a workshop on that previously and there will be more workshops on that coming up. So we are doing that. To the point of visual relief with the building facade and changing that, that would not be mitigation, would not be appropriate as the term implies, but what we can do, part of this project as a whole includes the site plan review, which is a ministerial process where conditions can be added so we can ensure that the facade and the landscaping meets what your Commission is looking for and we can impose that. And if the applicant does not like that, that can always be appealed up to and come back to your planning commission, the site plan review itself. So I think we can get that covered between now and City Council, though.
So, so what are you saying about that? You're saying that we don't have to make that a condition of our motion tonight or not?
Not tonight, no. That will be part of, what we can do is take that information and go with our site plan review process and we can make it a condition of the site plan review and they can provide those elevations. As Mr. Semken was saying, it's being worked on. It just needs a little bit more time and then we can look at those and see if it meets the intent of what you're looking for and we can bring those forward. If not, we can condition appropriately at that time with the site plan review.
I'm sorry, I'm just talking. But on that plan, there is a planting strip along 99 and there's a planting strip between the retention pond and the building. But my experience has been that they're not going to develop all that all at one time and so they will likely build the industrial building first and then, over time, as the needs arise and they find tenants, they will build out the commercial. And so I'm concerned about when we see the landscape along 99 and when we see the landscape between the retention pond and the industrial building. And so I don't know if we can resolve that now or if we can somehow condition that or I don't know if you have a recommendation of how we can proceed on that matter.
Again, it would be my suggestion or recommendation that that's incorporated in the site plan review. I understand what you want. I believe the applicant understands what you want and I can ensure it gets there through our site plan review process and we can condition it appropriately at that time if we need to. And again, keep in mind, you're going to come back and with the parcel map, and so you'll have an opportunity to obtain more information, at least through the parcel map also.
So then all you're asking for us is to decide on the zoning change at this time?
That was my recommendation on the environmental impact report, the general plan amendment and the zone change, yes.
I'm sorry. I'm not new here, but long, well, these were the, exactly, this was the time that we would impose conditions and we couldn't later, so has something changed?
I mean, if you want to impose conditions, you would be imposing it either on the zone change, or that's where you'd probably impose it, is on the zone change. And basically that would be for any building that would come in. Again, since they have a site plan review and those conditions are included as an attachment to your staff report, what we can do is we can make sure that those conditions are revised to address the comments that you're concerned with. And if those are not properly revised, again, you'll have an opportunity to speak with the applicant about this at the parcel map or we'll have a condition and the applicant may not want to do that and they can appeal that site plan review to your commission.
So it'll be noted on what was discussed here?
Absolutely.
That there would be a 50-foot elevation relief? And that, how would you, and you would note on phasing of the landscape at a certain point?
Or maybe you would like to get that confirmation from the applicant? I believe they did provide that they would do it every 50 feet, but they could put it on the record every 50 feet?
Yeah, he did say it on the record, but my question would be to go after what Commissioner Coleman's saying is the phasing of the landscape.
Maybe the applicant would be amenable to putting in all the frontage landscape along 99 with the warehouse? That would be a question for them.
That would be a great idea. Could we ask the applicant?
Yeah, if we could hear from the applicant, they also, you know, for me, I'd like us to see somehow a condition that requires the developer to secure that entire property. There's a lot of homeless camps within that and the city will help you get them, get them out.
I know I forgot something that you asked for, Commissioner. So to answer your question, in phase one, the detention pond, retention pond has to go in. So definitely the landscaping that goes all the way around that and up will be done, but we will agree to put the landscaping that runs the length, because we have to screen the industrial building, which is the largest thing to be, tallest thing to be screened. So we will do, we'll do that and come back to you and hopefully, you know, you'll see it in the rendering and what we'll do with the line of screening that comes all the way along the freeway, we'll agree to put that in upfront in phase one. And we'll also have to put in the screening around the detention basin. And you did ask me, and I forgot about it and I apologize, about putting fencing up around the retail if that isn't developed at the same time and we will commit to doing that also.
All right. I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve item 6A.
Do we have a second?
The general plan amendment, zone change number 210184.
Thank you.
I'll second.
There you go.
Commissioner Neal, thank you. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion passes with Chair Cader absent and Commissioner Wade absent.
I do. So, decisions of the Commission, although this is only a recommendation to City Council, your decisions are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. The appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the Commission's decision. Appeal must be addressed to the City Council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project, identify the decision appealed and address facts and reasons why the Commission's decision should not be upheld.
Thank you. No, it's good, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff, does staff have any communications at this time?
Very briefly, first, I just want to recognize my staff. It's really a small staff and I have two key players, two principal planners, Cassandra Gale, sitting next to me, who does these types of projects, and then Ms. Jenny Ing, another principal planner, who does a lot of the subdivisions and track maps, parcel maps and such. So I really appreciate all their help. We will have a meeting on October 20th and at that time, we're also preparing a workshop on hillside development because there'll be some projects coming forward that'll be dealing with the hillside development, which is part of our ordinance.
Commissioner comments. Oh, no, Madam Clerk, next item, please, sorry.
Agenda item eight, Commission comments.
Does any Commissioner have any comments they would like to make at this time?
Yeah, I'll make a comment if you don't mind. Thank you.
Please.
I want to thank staff for all of your hard work on this particular project because it was, it was a significant project that needed a lot of review and we appreciate you guys providing us, you know, all the information that we needed over the last couple of weeks to make an informed decision. So thank you.
Stole my thunder. I'm just kidding. Yeah, thank you. That was a lie. We appreciate you very much. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:58 PM, October 6, 2022.